So with the sign this as we're starting, have we do?
Yes.
I only read down to item six.
Yeah.
So I didn't go past that.
A little coordination. All right, the time is 6:08 PM. I'm calling to order a regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas for Monday, November 17th, 2025. And tonight is a special night. We're going to be, of course, seating our newly elected council members here in a little bit. We'll also be saying goodbye to some dear council members that have served the city well over the years. Before that, though, we are going to go into our few regular agenda items that we need to get through and also a special recognition item. So we'll open it up with agenda number two, which is public comments. So if this time you wish to speak, please step up to the podium and address council. They'll also have a chance to, you know, give an address later if you wish to for certain items, especially outgoing council members. But it's a good time at this time to speak. Shortest public comments we've had.
I've got a feeling he's directing that to one person.
Got it. Alicia Browner. I've been in Sunset Valley for almost 25 years. And I just want to thank Rudy for always listening to the citizens, always being the voice of reason, showing both, talking about both sides of an issue, but really showing some empathy and consideration for other points of view. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Pabaliza, 26, Sunset Trail. And congratulations to the present council and the incoming council. My item here is going to be short. It's going to be something like what I addressed at the previous council meeting. That previous council meeting was on October 21st, and I had a few comments about that item number 12. I want to address again the streets that I'm most familiar with. This has to do with drainage and upkeep and what have you of right of way, by the way, as you know. Anyway, the things that I am most familiar with are the streets as Long Oak, Pillow Rees and Sunset Trail. And these streets drain to the creek. There's many residents that have ditches and culverts next to their property. And I still can't imagine, now this is some of the items on, which we won't go through right now, that was listed on the two-page item number 12 of that last meeting. And here's a bit of it. I still can't, from my point of view, I can't imagine many of these residents being able to maintain the ditches to be free of weeds, tall grass, and stagnant water. That's from paragraph three on that agenda last meeting. However, in that same item 12, paragraph eight states that the Public Works Department will continue to perform semi-annual maintenance of residential drainage ditches focused on mowing, vegetation control, and debris removal to ensure proper drainage and prevent obstructions. The city will maintain drainage ditches for functionality, not for aesthetics. Good enough. It is mentioned, did I miss it? It was mentioned that that would be semi-annual. And semi-annual may be enough. A lot of residents, just about all the residents, aren't really interested in the frequent mowing with the right-of-way being extremely low, extremely cut, extremely dry and dusty. And that's really a good point. A lot of frequent mowing and taking care of these drainage ditches is really probably not necessary. However, I would like to suggest that if there is a time of the year that there is a lot of weed and grass growth, or whatever happens in these right-of-ways and the ditches and what have you and around the culverts, that the city could find a small amount of time and a small amount of money to take care of those spots at whatever time would be necessary. It's really, I agree with some of the items that mention that it's not, or the program that it's not necessary to have our landscaping contractor, or actually our maintenance contractor, if you will, take care of this over seven to 14 days. It's been a bit much in the past. All I'm suggesting is, is could a minimal amount of attention All I'm, all I'm suggesting is, is could a minimal amount of attention be given by the city and not leave the residents having to look at this in that stringent paragraph that was in this number 12? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Maybe else wishes to speak at this time? All right, we're going to move on to our next agenda item. Consider an act on approval of a proclamation recognizing Girl Scout troop 2122. And I'll hand this over to Councilmember Rogengarden for introduction to the sign.
Would the Girl Scouts and their leaders please come forward?
Or would you like them to stop?
I think, will, they can stand right there and then we'll have an opportunity to.
Yeah, and if you don't mind, later we'd like to take a photo of you and the council. So, thank you. Earlier this spring, we had a partnership agreement to give the Girl Scouts a, for them to earn a bronze, they have to show certain talent. They have to complete a junior journey, they have to build a team, they have to explore the community, they have to identify an issue, they have to research, they have to develop, create a plan, and then put that plan into action. So the plan that we did was to show them what it's like to be a businessperson. They had the idea of wanting to have a city garden, but they didn't have any money to buy the plants. And I let them know that if you know someone who has money, you can then go ahead and team up with that person. So I bought all the plants, or I should say, we bought all the plants, and we paid for the plot, and they did the work. They planted all the plants, they put signs up, they did a wonderful job. I was so impressed. So they created these laminated signs where you could feel, touch, smell, and then they had everything numbered where they could go ahead and tell you what it is that they planted, so you could research. And trust me, I didn't know all the plants, so I had to research a couple of times. And then when you have a business partnership, the person who puts the money in should get some rewards, the person who does the work should get some rewards. So hopefully, we both got those rewards, because I walked away with some green beans, some tomatoes, and some zucchini that I haven't grown myself, but you guys did it. And hopefully, you got some watermelon and some cantaloupe, because I was watching a watermelon grow, and I was hoping you guys got it. So thank you so much, I appreciate it. And did you get your bronze?
Yes.
Congratulations. Now, if you don't mind coming up and we'll.
Well, let's, let's do the vote and the proclamation, and then we'll take the photo.
There you go.
Go ahead, and if you want to make a motion.
I, I move that we vote on the proclamation. I haven't seen it in front of me, so.
We approve a proclamation recognizing.
I approve the proclamation, I'm sorry.
Is there a second for that?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, well, I will read the proclamation, and then we'll bring everybody up for our podium, if that's okay. All right. This is a proclamation by the mayor and the city council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas, recognizing Girl Scout troop 2122 for their contributions to the Sunset Valley community. Whereas Girl Scout troop 2122, led by troop leaders Christina Shepherd and Diana Hagerty, has demonstrated inspiring commitment to community service, environmental stewardship, and hands-on learning. And whereas the troop designed and planted a sensory garden within the Sunset Valley Community Garden, thoughtfully incorporating plants that engage all five senses and provide beauty, fragrance, and educational value to the residents and visitors alike. And whereas the scouts carefully selected, planted, and maintained a variety of herbs, flowers, and plants, and added delightful sensory elements such as wind chimes and fragrant herbs. And whereas through this collaborative project, the troop not only enhanced Sunset Valley's natural environment, but also embodied the spirit of partnership by working closely with community members, sharing in the joys of cultivation, learning, and stewardship. Now therefore be proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the City of Sunset Valley, Texas, that the city hereby honors Girl Scout troop 2122, troop leaders Christina Shepherd, assistant leader Diana Hagerty, and all the scouts who contributed to the creation of the sensory garden for the outstanding service and positive impact to the community. Thank you very much.
I guess I'll leave this here then.
All right, council, we're going to move on to our next agenda items. Item four, which is consider and act on approval of the minutes from the October 21st, 2025 regular meeting. Councilmember Barrow.
We approve the minutes from the October 21st, 2025 regular meeting.
Is there a second for the motion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we approve the minutes from the 21st, October 21st meeting. All right, so council, the next item is the canvas, the returns from the November 4th, 2025 joint regular and special city elections, and consider approval of the resolution of the canvas and certification to the results of the central and special city elections in the City of Sunset Valley, Texas, held on Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. And council, what we need for this is just a motion to approve the results. And from that point, what we'll do is we will go ahead and start inauguration and swearing in of the new council members. Councilmember Johnson.
There's a long one.
You can just say, I move to approve the results.
I move to approve the results.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Well, we're going to go ahead and do inauguration, swearing in of the new council members, and if I could, we're going to start with, is there a particular order that we need to do it in, Melissa? All right, we'll start with the order I have here, which is Karen. This is like playing with Family Feud.
That's exactly what it looks like.
I have them on my team, that's your team.
We're good. Yes, we're good.
All right, so if you could, please raise your right hand. In the name and by the, and repeat after me, in the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Karen Medicus. I, Karen Medicus.
I, Karen Medicus.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of council member for the city of Sunset Valley of the state of Texas.
For the office of the city, of the, okay, office of council member for the city of Sunset Valley of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
Let's see, and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
Congratulations, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
And then we'll start with next Dawn. All right, so if you could, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Good thing you have a copy, because that way you can follow along.
Exactly.
All right. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Dawn Dixon.
I, Dawn Dixon.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council member for the city of Sunset Valley.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of council member for the city of Sunset Valley.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the, excuse me, of the state of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
And the laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
Congratulations, thank you for your service. Roy, if you want to come up? Thank you. I'll leave you. All right, all right, if you could repeat after me.
Okay.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas.
I, Roy Green.
I, Roy Green.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of council member for the city of Sunset Valley of the state of Texas.
Of council member for the city of Sunset Valley of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God.
And to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and the laws of the United States of this state, so help me God.
Congratulations, thank you. Welcome for your technical service. All right, so we are going to seat the new council this time, and we'll have Dawn and Roy, if you guys could come up, you guys are going to join us up here. Well, as we welcome our new council members and we seat the new council, our next order of business is to recognize the outgoing council members. And so at this time, we're going to have a brief presentation for both outgoing council members who've given their service to the city, beginning with council member David Barrow. Yes, yeah, so council member Rogengarden is the longest consecutively serving council member. Mickey Powers beat you by one year, but she had, she had breaks, Mickey, but she had breaks between her service, yeah, yeah, so, so longest consecutively serving, so congratulations. Councilmember Johnson.
I'll go first, sir. Dave, it was awesome sitting next to you. You, I really need to learn how to be, how to listen a lot more and how to be very brief with my comments, because you would always sit there and I could see that you were really working on any of the issues that we were deliberating about, and then you would come through with such a clear, concise question that you got out in two sentences, and I always felt, why can't I do that? So, but, so it was really awesome serving on council with you for the last two years. Rudy, you're awes, it's going to be weird not having you up there, honestly, because like, almost the entire time I've lived in Sunset Valley, you have been here. And when I first got on council, I remember one of the first things that we did was Laura and Marion were getting a variance for the property, and you called me up, you're like, let's go walk the property. And I was just like, here you go, bud, let's go check it out. And I thought it was so awesome, you know, just, this is, this is what the job is, getting out there, talking to people, actually seeing what's on the ground. Your, your review of all of the material is awe-inspiring, and also your notes, I remember at one point, you went back through, it must have been a decade of notes, saying like, when we revisited things across all those different years, you had it all recorded. We should get that information and get it on Laserfish, because it was, it was truly amazing. And, you know, one, one nice thing is, I, when I'm out running, I always see you on your morning walks. I think we kind of, when you're walking at 6:00 AM, I'm running, and it'll be nice that I still get to see you on those, but, but thank you both for your, your service. It was awesome.
I'm going to be short and sweet. Thank you for your service, Dave and Rudy.
Councilor Medicus.
Dave, you're a great neighbor, and thank you so much, it's been a pleasure to serve with you on city council, and we're going to miss you up here. And Rudy, I don't know of anyone else who has been so dedicated to reading everything, being prepared, and I really appreciate how much time you spend being involved in everything. You always show up, you're always there participating, how can I help? And, and you've just been not only an amazing council member, but amazing supporter for the arts and everything else in Sunset Valley, so thank you.
Councilor Dixon.
One more, just one, there you go.
I just want to say what great role models you both have been for showing us about pitching in and all taking part in making the city great. Thanks, y'all, and have fun in the next retirement.
Mayor Proton.
First, Dave, I wanted to thank you for stepping up when you, when we really needed you to step up. You've been the, the clear, calm voice of reason on this council, and just as council member Medicus always says what I want to say, but says it better, you often say what I wish I'd said. So thank you. Rudy, your commitment has been, I think, inspiring to a lot of people. You're always there, you've always, you are always in the details. You and I haven't always agreed on everything, although lately, I think we've surprised ourselves by agreeing on a lot of things, but I've always respected your point of view, and I've always really, really respected your commitment to this community. It's, it's something for people to emulate. So thank you for your service.
Thank you. I would also invite anybody else who wishes to speak at this time from the public, if you didn't already get a chance to and want to speak to this item.
Hi, everyone, Geton, Car Road 36, Lone Oak Trail. I just wanted to say, echo a lot of the things that have been said before. Dave, I don't think, well, we didn't have the pleasure of overlapping on council, but thank you for stepping up when you did. It's always difficult, because there's so many, what you. It's always difficult, because there's so many, what you hear here is only a piece of, I bet, the feedback that you get from residents and walks and your email box and everywhere else. So, I appreciate the time that you took to, to serve. And, and especially, you know, there's a lot that goes into our city council meetings and running our city that people don't see. And, and thank you for being part of that, when it's easier to just sit back, relax, and then sometimes complain about, well, how come the city did this, how come the city did that? So, we appreciate your service and all. And also, I wanted to say thank you to Rudy. We did serve together on council for three years, which now seems like a long time ago. But, but like Rob and, and other folks have said, I remember when I started on council, just seeing the level of commitment that you had to, to read through everything. And even when we were on budget and finance committee, you know, there's a lot of numbers, a lot of the details of those things. But that helped teach me about the level of preparation to do the job well and to do it right. And I just wanted to say thank you for that. And also about, you know, like Rob also mentioned, getting out and listening to public input on things. Not just the input of the people who come to council meetings, because not everyone has the time to, to come here. And sometimes what's written on the paper may not adequately describe what's going on, you know, in this, in the situation in the community. So, I thought that was, that was, that was very well done. It takes a lot of time to do it well, and it was, and I appreciated that as a fellow council member, and then also as a, as a resident too. And, you know, the same way, another thing that you taught me, especially, part of the time that we were on the council was, you know, I don't know if folks remember when, you know, now council meetings are pretty calm and everyone gets along, but there, there were some contentious times with, not just with the people up there, but also with residents and that kind of thing. But another thing that you did that was very effective was not ever taking votes personally, and always looking at it from, through the lens of what's in the best interest of the city. And thank you for all of that, especially for doing that for such a long time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
It's a green light, so I'm assuming it's on? Yes, I can hear it, okay. The first thank you goes to all the residents, because I couldn't have served had they not wanted me to serve. So, I appreciate all the residents who voted for me to be on council. And I always hoped that I would do a good job for the residents, and that was my goal. So, thanks to all the residents. Staff, I don't know how you put up with some of us misfits. We got all these different careers up there, and every year, it's a potential that there's new bosses sitting up there, giving you a different direction. And that's gotta be so frustrating. So, thank you staff for hanging in there with all of us. I appreciate that. And again, one more time, thank you to all the residents for allowing me to serve. It sure did not seem like it was this long. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just say a few words, Dave. We spoke earlier today, but it was a pleasure serving with you, yeah. I, I enjoyed our weekly meetings and check-ins, and I wish you the best in your next endeavors as you're retired, but still very busy, so. And Rudy, I just wanted to say, it's been a pleasure serving with you in the many different capacities you've seen me in, many different positions through the cities. And yeah, I will echo, you have been at nearly every city event, always willing to volunteer and serve. And yes, just, just really appreciated your, your thoroughness as you served on city council, so thank you very much.
First, Dave, it's been an honor working with you on Public Works Committee. I appreciate all that you've done this, this past two years to see us through everything. Thank you so much for your service. And Rudy, I am in awe of all that you've done, all the service you've done. It's, it's awesome to have that kind of dedication, to serve that long, to continue to always meet with the residents, to continue to do that endless amount of research. I could always count on you that, I knew you read the backup. So, it's been good to know, it's been so great to work with you on that. And I just hope that you, whatever your next adventure is, that you're still coming to the events. And that you're still there to help out, and you still get to be with the community and serve in that capacity.
Dave, I didn't get to work with you often, but you were always a class act up there. And, you know, just like Chip said, you always seemed to say the right thing and put a lot of thought into what you said. Great job, and I'm sure I'll see you around town. Rudy, the word that comes, that's come up in some of these comments is thorough. And you have, you were always thorough, always fiscally thorough. And a memory that come, every time I think of you, I never forget when the police department was being built. And at one point, as they were building it, you came in with a pole with a mirror attached to look under the counters they were installing, to make sure that they had done a good job. I didn't know you real well, but I thought, wow, that's one that's paying attention, so, job well done.
All right. Anybody else wish to speak at this time? Okay, at this time, we're going to take a brief recess, so that we can celebrate the incoming and outgoing council members. There are some refreshments at the table. We will try to resume, I think, in about 10 minutes. So, 6:50 is when we're going to target coming back up. So, go and celebrate, and thank you so much.
Yeah.
All right, so we are resuming our council meeting after a brief recess. Counsel, we have a few more agenda items before we can adjourn. We're going to proceed with number 10, which is election of the mayor pro tem as required by section 22.0637 of the Texas Local Government Code. So, Counsel, just as in years past, what I'll do is I'm going to open it up for nominations. Once we have all the nominations that have been submitted, then we'll close nominations. Then I will ask the people who've been nominated if they're willing to serve. And if we have multiple people that are nominated and willing to serve, then we'll go proceed to a vote until we have a majority for a particular candidate. If only one person is nominated and is willing to serve, then we will just move to appoint them by acclamation. All right, with that, I will open up for nominations. Councilmember Johnson?
I nominate Karen Medikus.
I nominate Robert Johnson.
Any other nominations? Councilmember Medikus, are you willing to...I'll close the nominations at this point unless there can be others. Councilmember Medikus, are you willing to serve in the role of mayor pro tem?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson, are you willing to serve in the role of mayor pro tem?
Not this year.
Okay. Well, with that, I move, or we can by acclamation, a claim that Councilmember Medikus is now mayor pro tem for this upcoming council year. So congratulations, Mayor Pro Tem Medikus. All right, I have some business I need to take care of, so can you take over the meeting for me? All right, moving on to your next agenda item, which is agenda number 11, consider assignment of council member liaisons to standing committees and the Arts Commission as required by chapter 31 of the City Code of ordinances. And, Counsel, we can do this either by a single motion, or if we want to do it individually, it's kind of...I get the sense that everybody knows generally what committees they want to be part of, but if Councilmember wants to make a motion to that effect...Mayor Pro Tem?
I'd like to continue to serve as a liaison for the Arts Commission.
And these can be statements, too, and then we can make a nomination. So, Councilmember Johnson?
Sure, I'm happy with public safety if Chief will have me.
Councilmember Young?
I would like to nominate Dawn for the Environmental Committee, and I would be happy to do Public Works.
Councilmember Johnson?
You said that you're a numbers guy the last time I talked to you about this.
Yeah, I think I'm on budget and something, finance.
So, yeah, I'm Nate Roy if you're up for it.
Yes, sir.
So it sounds like if somebody wanted to make a motion to that effect, Councilmember Johnson?
Pardon? Oh, well, so...I'm looking at how to word this, get used to this. This is me every two weeks. I move we approve the liaison assignments for the standing committees and Arts Commission as required by chapter 31 of the City's Code of Ordnances, and just list them. And so that is for Budget and Finance, Roy Green, for Environmental Committee, that's Dawn Dixon, for Public Safety, Rob Johnson, for Public Works, Charles Young, and for Arts Commission, Karen Medikus.
Thank you. Is there a second for that?
Second.
Mayor Pro Tem, seconds? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, congratulations on the committee assignments. And I just want to say thank you to council members. You want to know something, Council, I know how much work it can be to attend both council meetings and the committee meetings, so I certainly appreciate the extra time and effort that it takes to do that. So hopefully that process will be a smooth transition for the new liaisons and a continuation of the excellent service for the existing liaisons. All right, Counsel, we are at agenda number 12. Consideration of agenda items for approval on consent. Who's going to do it? So I'm looking at Dawn because she's sitting where Rudy was, but I'm going to...Councilmember Young?
I'll do it this time. I mean, we pass on consent items number 13, 14, and 15.
And so for new council members, the way this works is when you have consent items, we can do a bulk vote on these. However, if any single item, if anybody is interested in pulling a single item, we pull that before we move forward with the voting process. So in this case, the motion is to approve on consent, I have number 13, 14, and 15. Does anybody want to withdraw one of those items? Councilmember Johnson?
I'll pull 15.
Okay, so 15's pulled. Anybody want to pull 13 or 14 from the approval on consent? Is there a second to approve on consent, I have number 13 and 14?
My second.
Okay, Councilmember Dixon, seconds? All those in favor approving on consent, I have number 13 and 14, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right, we approved on consent the appointment of Stuart Browning, Tom Sedell, Susan Durso, Richard Hayes, and Ravi Sinibassan as regular members of the Board of Adjustment for a two-year term, and I have number 14, the appointment of Burton Pearson as a regular member of the Public Works Committee, and Scott Crowe as a regular member of the Environmental Committee for the current fiscal year ending September 30, 2026. And then we're going to move to our last item, which is I have number 15, consider an act on canceling the December 16, 2025 regular city council meeting, and I'll hand it over to you, Councilmember Johnson.
So over the weekend, we had an issue with parking on Oakdale. Public Safety is going to take this up on probably next Monday and discuss it, and there is talk that maybe there'll be some movement on the 2nd of December. If we...if nothing is determined at that meeting, then we might be kicking this into the new year. So I just want some guidance. Do we think that we would be able to move quickly enough to make decisions by the second?
By the council meeting on the second?
Yeah.
So I would, given that it's, you know, an impactful problem and, you know, it's not likely to go away anytime soon, I would urge us to try to get something on a second for agenda for consideration. If Public Safety is going to be meeting next week, it sounds like that still gives us time to put together a recommendation from them to bring forward council on the second. So I'll let Matt and Chief speak to that.
If a resolution isn't reached on the second, if council's not ready to make a decision, we could always call a meeting, a special meeting for that one specific item.
And the retreat, we never...it's a public meeting, but we never take action.
We have taken action for time-sensitive items at the retreat, and so that is another option, although it's not the best format for a public...
Okay, I'm ready to make a motion. I move we cancel the December 16, 2025 regular city council meeting.
All right, is there a second for that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so, Counsel, as a reminder, our next meeting is going to be on December 2nd. That's going to be a regular council meeting, the first Tuesday of December. And then we have our council retreat on the 5th. It's going to be a public meeting, but we usually have a lot more flexibility in terms of location, and we're going to be meeting over at the Hahn Building, and they're graciously offering us use of their space again. And if we need to, we can always do a called meeting if there's an urgent item that needs to be considered prior to our winter break. All right, so, Counsel, we are out of agenda items.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second for that? All of those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we are adjourned at 7:10 p.m. Congratulations to the new council members. Thank you.